Alright Chums, thank you so much for joining us on another episode of Night City Council. My name is John John the Wise and I have with me the illustrious mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt. How are you, James?
Hello, I'm James. I brought somebody.
You did indeed bring somebody, return guest.
Introduce our illustrious return guest.
Yeah. Illustrious, illustrious alumni, Jay Gray.
It's illustrious.
Jay Gray. Am I like to your left, James, on your phone?
No, you're...
You pointed.
This is not a good contest.
Hello, this is obviously made for radio. Hi, I'm Jay Gray. I am many things, but most importantly, here I am, the Cyberpunk Red Line Manager. And I am here because I don't know, James said I had to be here, and he said if I don't come here, he won't finish something, a project, a super secret project he's working on. And so that's it.
Oh, do tell, do tell.
I've been called out. I've been called out. So yes, I used my clout to drag him onto this.
As a senior game designer for Arkham.
That's right. I'm a senior citizen now.
That's right, at least a senior somehow.
You get a 10% discount at certain booths at Con.
Alright.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you all for joining us.
Your throat at you.
They throw dice at you.
Today we have Jay Gray, the Faceless, because we were having some technical issues with his cam. So I do apologize for the video listeners, but audio is still loud and clear, and Jay is gonna join us. We're gonna be talking about two DLCs today. The first one is the bike one, Spinning Your Wheels: A New Way to Ride the Edge. Really fun, bikes in the dark future kind of thing. And then, of course, the Return of the 12 Days of Cybermiss. What was it last year? What was it called last?
Gunmiss.
Gunmiss. That's right. So this year, it is the 12 Days of Cybermiss, where it's all cyberware, all Santa, has a great little cover too. And then, we will go ahead and answer some questions that you guys have left us. I have a list to go through. So here we go, the show has begun. Jay and James, you guys just came back from PAX, right?
Oh yeah.
We weren't sure if we were gonna do another episode, but it just happened to be a perfect time to do it. And here we are, the last episode of the year. Tell us about PAX and your experience there.
Oh, PAX was great. It was a bit of a like, it's very nice to go back there after pandemic and whatnot. And I think we all had a pretty good time. And I don't know, I got to talk to a lot of people, did some interviews with those who'll probably be coming up. How'd you feel about it, Jay?
Oh, no, it's a nice thing about PAX, it's a smaller show than Gen Con, and there's less pressure. It's just RTG crew in the booth, as opposed to us and whoever else we can snag from the outside is willing to come help us out. So it's a nice chance for us all to get together and really spend time together, because we have four, four to five employees who are in central office, and even they work from home half the time. And then, we have two employees who are in other parts of Washington State and me on the East Coast. So it's always nice to get together and just chill and do things and exchange ideas and just bond. But it was cool. The great thing about PAX is it's a lot of younger gamers who are fairly new to the hobby. And it's always nice to talk to them and get them to learn that there's life outside of a certain Titanic fantasy role playing game.
We heard a lot of, we heard a lot of people coming up with that idea on their own, though. A lot of them were like, oh, we're looking for something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cool.
And it's also nice, the pattern we're noticing is that 5E has been around long enough that people who have played it are saying, well, I played this, and I've done this, and I've done Strahd, and I've done Dragons, and I've done Landes. So what do I do next? And the next thing is, they look for other games, and they come looking for Cyberpunk. You do have a lot of visibility right now because of the award winning in some cases and not award winning in others, anime, Cyberpunk, Edge Rogers. So that's nice. And we're happy to share.
Absolute masterpiece.
It was, we're happy to share. And it's just exciting. It's always exciting to see, you know, I am, I am on the other side of certain hills, age hills. And it's always nice to see younger people, younger gamers exploring and expanding the horizons, because you know what, even if they only play a couple of games of Cyberpunk and they go back to 5E, I think there'll be better gamers, and they'll have a better understanding, and just they'll learn things and take it, the experience, the breadth of the experience will make the game more enjoyable for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta another take on that.
Oh, yes.
My take on it is that we've got a new generation of old heads coming in that are, you know, they've done a lot of 5E, and they're ready to do their first non-5E long campaigns. So they're coming in with the experience of doing 5E for maybe a couple of years. And they're, and so they're like fairly new experienced players, if that makes sense. It's not people that never played TRPG before, it's people who have played a lot of one TRPG. Anyway, that's, it's cool. I know, I know they're really young to be called old heads, but I think they've been through enough.
That makes perfect sense.
They need a forever home.
There's even like 2020 folks that have come into the community saying like, hey, saw the content out there, and it made me wanna try out Red. I've been playing 2020 for years. You got those folks coming in too. There's folks from every, different strokes, different folks, right? That's what they say.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you guys had a good time. You guys also had David from High Shelf Gaming running some games for you guys, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, High Shelf Collective.
Oh, sorry, High Shelf Collective, I'm so sorry.
It's hard to remember, it is, yeah. David and his crew were very nice, and they, along with the Alexandria Library, which is a gaming library that travels to different conventions. They've seen them at Gen Con, you may have seen them at PAX Unplugged. You can just grab, go in there, grab a book, sit down at the table and play, or even read.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna go to one place at a convention and just read a lot of really crazy, wild TRPGs, Alexandria Library is gonna do that nowhere else.
That's so cool.
They ran several games for us, and they, you know, they were at Gen Con running games for us too. So we have a good longstanding relationship with them.
Yeah, shout out to them. They're doing a little charity drive right now. By the time you guys see this video, it'll be done, but you can mark your calendars for next year. It's for the Trevor Project. We were able to generate 650 bucks on my day where I ran a one-shot. And if we have some time today, I'll talk about it, but we got a lot to get through, so maybe not.
So maybe we, maybe we should start with the bikes. I did wanna say something real quick before we do the bikes.
Yeah.
And it's, I know, I know I did drag Jay here with, through my clout, apparently. But, but really, it's because these bikes, these bikes, they're, they're his baby.
Right, writing and design by Jay Gray.
They're really cool.
Every once in a while, James comes to me and says, Jay, Jay, I've got too much work and I'm tired. I can't do the DLC this month. Can you do it? And I'll say, yeah, I can, I can do something. I can take the load off. More seriously, though, every once in a while, one of us will get an idea, and it's like, yeah, that's it. And it's not just us. In fact, January may be another writer who's not either of us.
Wow, wow, we're really laying it on thick for that one, huh?
Yeah.
Well, you guys got a good crew.
Third writer.
We got a publicity cycle for a DLC, great.
Absolutely.
Hell yeah.
Well, we've, we're blessed, you know, as a community, we have all these brilliant writers like Melissa and you guys. And even better, we get to have you guys on here to talk about the stuff that you're making, like Spinning Your Wheels.
Yes, this is the fourth title I came up with, this.
I'm very excited about spinning your wheels. But what I wanna know, so it adds loosely, it adds skateboards, rollerblades, bikes.
Inline skates.
Inline skates.
Non trademarked version of roller, of that specific product.
Dude, I didn't even know that was a trademark thing.
Oh yeah, no, rollerblades are very specifically a type of inline skate that's put out by one specific company.
It's like Kleenex, you know, you know it by the Kleenex, but it's actually tissue, right?
Yeah, if you read the description, I very specifically avoid words blade, I believe.
Wow.
Such a cool name too, Roller Blade.
Well, then people would expect us to have like talon foots on them. But yes, it adds bicycles, skates.
Yes, we got some cool stuff here. The bicycles as a vehicle section talks about how your body and it comes into it. So I guess the idea is the higher body stat that you have, the faster you can go. And I believe it has to do with endurance as well, right?
So before, before we get to the rules, I wanna point this out, because this gets skipped a lot, and I don't, it deserves a shout out. In almost every DLC we put out, there is lore.
Yeah.
Either as a, like a little story type thing at the beginning, for example, in Woodchipper's Garage, there's an interview with Jericho Hunt, between Jericho Hunt and Woodchipper. This one, it is between Angie Wu 2.0 and Gabriel Yang, the CEO of Yang's Wheels. And this is cool stuff, because I know people are hungry for some Cyberpunk lore. If they go digging into this stuff, they're gonna find out information, like the fact that there's manufacturing in Night City in 2045. Or information about the fact that Switzerland had a bicycle Calvary up until the Fourth Corporate War.
That's crazy.
I think that's pretty cool.
That's so wild.
So, you know, if you wanna know more about Night City, read these things, because we're dropping little hints here and there, and you'll learn a little bit more.
A lot of the, a lot of the DLCs have mid story points, where we'll do big beginning story points and big end story points in larger books. For a lot of the DLCs, you're gonna miss the middle of the series. We do put real lore in these.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Farm raised.
These are all canon.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah, James and I run everything through Mike to make sure that he's good with it, because he's the ultimate arbitrator of what's canon and what's not canon. And also because, you know, he's in charge of Cyberpunk, and so we need to make sure he's good with what we're putting out. And he may have ideas. Like, for example, Nomad Pack changed a bit as of Mike's input. Gabriel Yang came from a different Nomad Pack originally, and Mike's input helped me change it. So yeah, all canon, good stuff you could bring in. Gabriel's wheel, Yang's Wheels would make for a great plot point. A local manufacturer out of the Haywood Industrial Zone, who is maybe a little on the fly, maybe willing to buy some bicycles, no questions asked. Unless, unless the person who owned the bicycle had the security package. Anyway, now we go to the rules. But I just wanna point out to people that, yeah, that the lore we put into these things, whether it's talking about places, the go-kart track at Danger Gout Headquarters in the Dating Sim, Dating Pack, or Yang's Wheels here, or Blood Rain in, I see whether, it's all canon lore.
That's good to hear. That's awesome, because you guys do have a lot of lore. If you put it all together with all the DLCs, it's a lot to take in. So have at it with that. But yeah, powering on through to the rules side of things, there is, you know, we don't have to break down everything, but there are rules for using bicycles, mechanics for using them, mechanics for using them in combat, mechanics for fatigue. And there are also mechanics about upgrading your bicycle. There's the same kind of thing you would do when you upgrade a vehicle, there's like the same idea and ideology behind it. And then, there are other offerings, like inline skates and skateboards. And then, there are tricks, there's costs, there's all that stuff. So why don't we talk about the idea behind bicycles and their mechanics? Jay, if you can tell us, what was your mindset bringing, introducing bicycles into the dark future?
Okay, so it's very simple. In a society where cars are either a pain in the ass to own, or expensive, they're not, either they're not practical for various reasons, you're gonna have bicycles. You're gonna have, you're gonna have a form of transportation that is cheap, reliable, and fits into an apartment. I mean, James, how many times a day do you move your car?
Actually, I have parking now.
Nice, congratulations.
But, but you know, alternate side of street parking is an annoyance. Cyberpunk Red cars cost roughly what real life cars do. The difference is, is in real life, you can get a loan for a car, maybe, if you're, if you're lucky.
And Cyberpunk, nobody's giving you a loan for anything.
As Gabriel Yang actually very specifically says in his interview, the only people who are getting loans are the people who don't need them.
Yes.
So people will turn to bicycles, and that is an opportunity for a NeoCorp, and that's what Yang's Wheels is, it's a NeoCorp. But it's an opportunity for a NeoCorp to say, hey, here's a niche, no one's filling it, I'm gonna jump in. And that was the reason. As for the rules, obviously, a bicycle is a vehicle. But we didn't wanna make it boring in terms of, oh, it has a combat speed and a narrative speed. We wanted people who were more in shape, have a higher body, to get more out of their bicycle, and have, you know, reward that. Because as people point out, while body is a cool stat, it, you know, it has no associated skills. So it sometimes feels like, oh, it's HP and punching damage, and that's it. And we wanted to put it that. And then, it's a little twidgets, you know, a bicycle's smaller, so it does less damage when you hit somebody with it. A bicycle is not something you drive, it's something you ride, so it's in athletics, because that's a sport, right?
Yep.
Tour de France, that's a sport. And then, obviously, you know, nomads aren't gonna do bicycles, because you can't bicycle, you can bicycle from Night City to Mexico City, sure, but your packs could be way ahead of you, because the rest of them are in cars.
Yeah.
So it's not as useful to nomads, it doesn't fit into their ethos. And then upgrades, you just wanna make it cool. I mean, yeah, I got a bicycle, I wanna make it cool. And that was just literally me going, okay, what things can you do with a bicycle? And the things like the bottled dynamo, which charges your batteries, that's a thing you can do. That's a real thing you can do for your bicycle. The electric pedal assist, that's fairly obvious. The folding frame, there are real folding bicycles, the gun mount goes back to, yes, military use bicycles, and they do put guns on them. And a lot of it comes down to the quote on the very last page, where Three Piece mentions that if you get the bicycle, you get the enclosure upgrade, which puts a shell, adds a third wheel and puts a shell around your bike. You get the electronic pedal assist, what you got is a little car for like less than 500 Euro bucks.
Yeah, with not a lot of SDP, right? I mean, that's the idea, that's what you trade off.
It's a, it's a, it's a slow, weak ass car that can get stolen fairly easily. But you know what, it's your car.
Yeah, but it's yours.
It kind of, it kind of strikes me as like the thing that you would get if you were a teenager and you'd been working a part-time job, and you wanted to, you wanted to get off of the, any other form of transportation.
Yeah, it's effectively a tiny, tiny metro car.
Very cool, very cool. I like that. That's, that's very in line with like the scavenger thing, opportunistic mankind, where it's like, you know, if you can't get a car, you make one. That's, that's totally what Cyberpunk is all about. So I love that. This is, this adds so much to the game.
The street finds a way.
Yeah, that's it. The street finds a way, that's what it is. And I've had a lot of my players, you know, even bring up bicycles in our, in my games. And I'm like, hey, you're right, I'm sure somebody has a bicycle. And then, I would just make up like rules on the fly, but now I don't have to.
You don't have to, there you go.
Yeah.
That was the basis of it. It just, it makes sense for any city where people have trouble owning cars to have, and public transportation sucks, to have something beyond just walking.
There it is. Okay, very good, very awesome. I love that you included skateboards and inline skates, because those are just as logical to exist.
The tricks, the tricks are done just like maneuvers, by the way. So you don't have to learn a new system to do cool tricks. It's the same for doing cool tricks in a car.
Yeah, if you, if you don't, if you don't particularly know a lingo for skateboards, roller, inline skates or bicycle tricks, you may have to actually look them up, because we did not actually explain what a tail whip is, or a rotating jump, or a laser flip.
Yeah, yeah, but it is broken. It's broken down in simple, advanced, and pro trick. So, and there are some examples there too. So if you're a skater or BMX rider, then this is up your wheelhouse.
Yeah, yeah. If you're grinding a rail, that's a pro trick. If you're just doing a heel toe, that's a simple trick.
I'm loving this baseline you guys have for tricks, because now, is this the third time we've seen this kind of system? First, it's with vehicles, then it was cheating, the cheating mechanic, and then now we're seeing it with bicycle tricks. I think it's good, it has legs.
We're putting the DV, we're putting the DV system through its paces.
Hey, so here's, here's the secret, is we are not adding a new subsystem at all. All we're doing is giving you examples of what a skill can do at different levels, at different DVs.
The power of interlock.
Yep, that's exactly it. And it's the same thing. By the way, if you have, if you downloaded this DLC when it first came out, please re-download it. We did have to change the glass. We originally put it in as armor, that's my bad. And it is now more appropriately thin cover as proof glass is supposed to be.
Nice, gotcha. Okay, sounds good.
That would be the one thing, yeah.
All right, I think that's, yeah, we all.
You want version 1.1, which is available on the website.
There it is. So it should be available. When you click on to download, it will be 1.1. So you don't have to worry about getting any old versions.
Also, one more thing, shout out to Bad Moon Art Studio, who did that, who did the cover, the image that comes with, on the front page of our Nomad, and our netrunner from the Bad Black Dog Company doing a sick jump over what is obviously a very poorly maintained Night City street.
Yeah, and doing a drive-by at that too, the passenger in the back. It's so cool.
Just, that gun they're wielding, I won't say too much about it. I will say that gun is not yet available in Cyberpunk Red, but will be Sunday soon.
Oh, Easter eggs, that's what we like here.
Is he saying something about the B word?
The BC.
The BC, yeah. Yeah, no, that gun very specifically comes from.
Don't say it out loud, or you know.
I said, I said it out loud.
He said it. But if you say it three times, then it'll appear, so let's not do that.
I can tell you anything about it, we're just gonna say it's in there.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, why don't we talk about the next DLC, The 12 Days of Cybermiss, a Cyberpunk Red holiday sequel. Last year, we had 12 Days of Gunmiss, and it had some really amazing lineup of guns that you can add to your arsenal as a game master. There is an amazing song there. What is this song supposed to be a parody of, or is it its own thing? Is it Silent Night? What is it?
I think originally, it was, it was supposed to be a parody of a different song, but a lot of the, a lot of my choicer lyrics got edited down.
It's still, it's still, it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, I mean.
I sang your, I sang your version out loud, and there are parts that were too many syllables, so that's what I tried to fix.
Fair enough, fair enough. So the song is a collaboration, really.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Most of it's James. I changed a few small words here and there.
So I think one of the, one of the cool parts about this, other than the awesome stuff, is that Jay and I wrote this together at PAX Up.
Yeah, we, two nights in a hotel, two nights, a couple hours in a hotel room, which was nice, we sat there. So the way that this and Gunmiss works is, we came up with the idea that, hey, we're going to do 12, it's very specific, and 12 is now the standard for items, because of this, apparently. But we did, we're gonna do 12 items, because 12 days of Christmas, and we're going to do, we want specifically do the blueprint style. The idea is S A N T A comes by, downloads these blueprints stolen from some company or another, or multiple companies, and makers can grab them and make their own. So you know, you ever wonder why a tech can make something from another company? It's because some tech has liberated it or reverse engineered it, in the same way that you can, in theory, I'm told, download some 3D printing files for certain commercial products.
Oh, interesting, interesting.
Certain workshops that produce games.
Well, so, so the rule, you know, the rule is, the rules are, A, it has to have art. Any piece we did, we did this with Gunmiss too, it has to have a piece of art, which we can do on this cool white on blueprint paper. And it has to be something we actually like. And it occupies, as always, the design philosophy of Cyberpunk Red is, new items have to occupy an interesting design space.
Yeah, they can't be something that already, we already have. There'll always be something new and interesting. So when we said there's new things, that word new means something.
Yeah, it adds, it adds a new element to every encounter, because if the bad guy's holding on to one of these things, or you find this in a box somewhere, it's quirky, you know? It has, it has life, it has character. I'm glad that Gang Jazzler stayed in, because I just love saying that. Whatever that means, I'm sure.
I have no idea what a gang jazzer, it's like some weird slang from the old eighties.
People who get them installed have, are part of gangs, and they definitely jazle you when they get you.
They jazle you, that's it, that's, that's.
I think it's a verb. I think jazzer is the, is the thing that happens to you. Did you get jazled?
That's new now.
I jazled him, Chum.
That is now Night City slang, official Night City slang for when you get electrocuted, you get jazzled.
I would imagine, imagine if you get knocked out or something in like a boxing match, you'd be like, they jazled him with a right.
He's an old jazlemonger.
There you go.
Yeah, the, it says here, Cyber Matrix Gang Jazzler. It is, does choking a target into unconsciousness take too long? Then you need the Gang Jazzler. Just press the jazzer into your praise neck, and you'll be able to deliver shock right through their spinal nerves and into their brain. Very nice, I love that. It's a cyber arm option, powerful electrical needle that can be concealed, DV13 resists torture. If the target fails, they go unconscious regardless of their hit points total. Oh man, that's strong. Holy cow.
You still have to, you still have to grapple. But once you grapple, it's, as long as they don't succeed at that check, they're down in one round instead of three.
Wow, I gotta show this.
They're the check. And importantly, you get one action to grapple, and then you got a whole turn cycle.
Yes. So, so the user still has two chances to get out of it, one to escape.
And then one to beat a grapple.
One to beat the, the.
The resist torture.
Resist torture drugs, drugs check.
One of the great and many reasons why giving players multiple actions per turn is a big question mark.
Yeah.
You don't want the answer to.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, and then there's some other good stuff here, any other.
Also, I should, I wanna, I wanna say that the Gang Jazzler runs off a battery pack, which you can recharge with the bottled dynamo on your bicycle.
Oh, there you go.
And since you get four in a site, four slots in a cyberarm, and you can upgrade a cyberarm to get five option slots, you can put one at the tip of each of your fingers for jazzer hands. And that is how you get jazz hands.
Jazz hands.
That's terrible, but now, now people are going to ask what happens if they set them all off at once, James?
They don't.
Oh, man.
It's not possible.
Certainly, if you grabbed somebody and you were jazling them three turns in a row, they should have, you might as well have choked them.
Yeah, it's a point. Well, that's why you don't have to recharge, because it's one shot per, I believe.
If you can't wait for black thing, you can always, you can always just get five Gang Jazzlers, and then you have cyber fingers already.
Yes.
I gotta say, the blueprint artwork that you guys have in this DLC, super reminiscent of 2020.
It is.
Is it 2020 art?
Yeah.
All these items, that was, we mentioned, they all have to have existing 2020 art.
Oh, yeah, I was like, dude, this looks exactly like the 2020.
The 2020 callback day, callback month is December.
December. And we did the same thing last time, all the art in Gunmiss was from 2020 sourcebooks.
Love it, I love that. Awesome, yeah, a lot of good stuff here, you know, we just looked at one.
Do you have a favorite other than the Gang Jazzler?
For Jay, yeah, Jay, do you have one?
Well, I mean, I'm going to say. Well, I mean, I'm going to say my, not my favorite, the obvious favorite is the Chain Rip.
Oh, yeah.
The winner, that's gonna be the contender, which is, it takes every slot in your arm unless you tech upgrade your arm. Uh, but uh, you now have a very heavy melee weapon, which you can rev to be an excellent, very heavy melee weapon.
A retractable chainsaw built into your arm. I mean, what's better than that?
Someone actually asked me if it was concealable and I said, read the description.
Specifically does not say.
Yeah, you have a chainsaw with an exhaust port in your arm. Here the elbow, and then look at the picture. Look at the picture of it, man. Um, John John will now insert the picture here. I made you some editing work.
Yeah, don't worry. The picture was up there already, so they saw.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see, what is my favorite, my favorite, my favorite's the Death Trance.
Very cool. Okay, here we go, Death Trance.
Yes, the the Death Trance, which is a piece of neural wear. So that's, that's, oof, you know what, it's tied with the Romanova cyber legs now, uh, but it's a piece of neural wear that basically makes you appear, your vital statistics appear as if they are dead, as if, as it slows them down, but you are not incapable, you're unconscious. So you can still act at a negative four to your actions.
Yeah.
And then it takes a medical tech or a criminology deduction or perception check to figure out that you're not dead as long as you're not moving.
Yeah, if you're, if you're moving, it kind of gives it away.
Yes, uh, and a repeated use could permanently affect the skin's color. Uh, and then there's a little, there's a little data pop on the side that says, obviously, uh, the Philharmonic vampires love this, and if they, uh, they, uh, if you can get through an entire performance of the Scottish play, that's Macbeth. For anyone who does not know theater superstition, uh, with the, with the Death Trance active, your, your place in the gang is assured.
Oh, that's so cool. Yeah, if you guys want to explore the Philharmonic vampires, the uh
Yes.
Tales of the Red is what you want. There's a great adventure in there for that.
We don't recommend adding this to it and turning it on during the big fight.
Yeah.
Yeah, not a good idea. Anything uh, you're, for you, James, uh, on this list?
Oh, I, I'm a big fan of the poser gangs uh in uh, in cyber, in this, in Cyberpunk. So, um, we have the um, the poser chip uh, which uh, changes the way you sort of talk to match your um, to match the person who the poser chip is modeled after. There's some interesting stuff in there. There's a lot of uh, interesting world building that can be done there, you know? Uh, you can get a poser chip that isn't from a famous person. Uh, and it'll cost more, but it's more like unique and stuff. Or maybe you get one from a target you're trying to portray during some sort of spy thing. And then there's the like, what if you install them in people against their will? That would be a cool villain thing to do. Um, and uh, there's, there's a lot of storylines that can open because of that cyberware. So I'm a big fan of that one. Uh, apparently, we both like the chipware.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, the, we know.
The chipware, everything else is like big.
They're both neuralware, Death Trance is actually, yeah.
Are, are the really big stuff in there. Neuralware, yeah, yeah.
We, it was chipware originally, that we realized that uh, the picture we have shows it, the small of the back, and no one has a chip port at the smaller back.
No, but it's a nice, that's a, it's a cool place to put it. The uh, I love the plus five to acting checks. Which is pretty powerful, if you think about it, in the right situation.
Oh, it's only a plus five if you're role playing as that character as well.
Gotcha.
Uh, it's a plus four otherwise, if I'm not wrong.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You're, you're correct.
There, there's a, there's a plus one, you can, you can get an additional plus one on top of your plus four, if you're like doing the Elvis voice.
If you, the player does the Elvis voice.
And it doesn't say, well, it says make an effort.
There you go, that's.
Available to everyone. The idea is that you're not, uh, you can like fight against this chip. Um, or you can like go with the flow, and if you go with the flow, you you naturally go into, whoa mama.
Oh, mine.
Exactly. And as everyone knows, Elvis is the most impersonated person in the world, even in Cyberpunk.
Yeah. Alright, that's uh, that's awesome. I love this DLC, love the art. Um, it's everything you need to add into your game. I highly recommend it. Uh, what's say, yes?
Your folks know, the bug eyes are in this one.
Yeah, the bug eyes are in here.
The big, the big bug eyes, those are in, those are 77s, so.
Yeah, that's right. Some of the us cracks.
And then, and then the mono vision, the the visor is in here as well. So there's, there's big stuff where.
If you're, if you're a big.
Spoilers right now, but there's, there's big items in there.
If you're a big optimizer, when it comes to cyberware, you're gonna love the mono vision.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's classic 2020.
Yeah. Al- also the opti-shields in there.
Oh, yes. Uh, yeah, yeah, his mono vision is in there.
I got my mono vision, baby.
The, yeah, and the Romanova cyber legs, which are the coolest cyber legs ever.
Um, do you guys think we can go into questions? I actually have a question about this DLC, so we can start with that one.
That was fast.
Right?
What did we do wrong?
This is from Ed Morgan. Uh, Ed says.
It's about the arc thrower. It's about the arc thrower, isn't it?
It is about the Kuroshi.
Oh.
Alright, so.
There's two of them.
I expected to hear an arc thrower question. Oh, by the way, there's a, there's a cyberarm that throws lightning bolts and shit.
It doesn't have a hand.
And does not have a hand.
That's just in time for Christmas. Uh, Ed Morgan says, I have a question about the Cybermiss DLC. Can a PC install both the Kuroshi mono vision and the Kuroshi opti-shield together? Or is like a one or the other type of thing? Love all your content. Also, Ed wanted to mention that he ran into you, James, at PAX and picked your brain. He was the guy with the corny Subaru Arasaka joke. I don't know if you remember that.
Oh, I remember that guy. Um, there was, uh, um, anyway, so the answer to that is the opti-shields, uh, sorry. One more time, is this the opti-shield or the uh?
Mono, it's both, can you have both?
The mono vision and the opti-shield?
Yeah, can you have both?
Yeah, yeah, no, um, they operate in different slots. The mono vision is cyber eye, uh, is cyber eye options. Uh, and the opti-shield is a, they're sunglasses that come out of your forehead and go above that, and they're actually internal cyberware that affects your cyber eyes, not cyber eye options. So absolutely, that is intended.
External, actually.
External, it's external? Okay, they're, they're external.
It's in the skin. We, we had a, a healthy debate as to whether they are internal or external.
Fair, fair enough. I, I believe, I believe they are external.
Yeah, but James is right. Looking at the picture, you say to yourself, oh, I can't see how the opti-shield would flow over thing bulging out of my, the middle of my face. But you just assumed that it kind of just went over, you know? It could work. Uh, I, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna say this right now. You are not stuck with the art in this book. You are allowed to make flavor changes if you want your opti-shield to look more like the sung- the, the, the retractable sunglasses from a certain famous uh cyborg in another famous cyberpunk franchise.
Yes, the one that did not ask for this.
This one did not ask for this. You are allowed to do that. Uh, you can make them like this one, you can make them look like however you want. That's your flavor. You are not stuck with our lore or our, even when it's visual lore.
And remember.
Because frankly, there's a lot of probably different variants of, like, we can, we'd love to show you art for, for stuff. Um, to help show you what the world is like, but realistically, we cannot show you the four different ways you can buy it. Because that would quadruple our budget. So uh, we're, we're counting on you to fill in the blanks.
And if you go to page five, they specifically mention that uh, there's a quote that specifically mentions that there's multiple design variations of the opti-shield, because of course, Kuroshi, like any fashion is going to keep putting out different variants to get people to buy them, so that you know, like, oh, wow, my opti-shield's out of style, I need to go get the new one.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, that would be the, that would be the answer. Uh, the bug eyes too, for that matter. We talked about like three other bug eyes that exist, but the art only shows you one of them.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yeah, and and I always try to tell folks, remember, just like there are different versions of iPhones that come up, there's always gonna be a new Kuroshi mono vision in your personal game. In your alternate universe of your game, there's gonna be a newer version with newer features or an older version. There's gonna be some that techs have messed with and changed, and you should have the freedom to do all that.
One exception is a chain rip always will have that exhaust port because it's awesome.
Yeah. We, the, the game can only suggest things to balance things out, you know what I mean? If you can retract that chainsaw, it's pretty, it's pretty uh messed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it, it, uh, I think the fact that it's not concealable is cool.
Oh, sorry.
If you, if you, if you have a chainsaw in your arm, don't you want everyone to know it?
Style of substance, baby.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Ed Morgan. I appreciate that question for the DLC. And by the way, if you folks have questions about DLCs, that's gonna go to the top of the list, by the way.
That's true. Love talking about the DLC. Any Elflines question of value will be answered before anyone else.
Oh, man, I have a question, James. When are you gonna stop?
Never. He's already working on Elflines 5.
Yeah, that's.
No, I'm not. I've had no thoughts about.
Never stop, James, never stop. Okay. Alright, let's go to this next question. I like this one. This is the kind of questions we like to hear. Uh, hi, John and James and Jay. Longtime listener, first time emailer. I've got a subject I'd like you guys' opinion on. Making cyberpsychos terrifying without flatlining the entire party, at least not on purpose. First, some background. I was recently in a game where me and my tombs went up against a cyberpsycho with the GM's main inspiration being the intro segment from the anime. Problem is, that was early level and me and a couple others were running melee and martial arts. This psycho had high reflexes and evasion, so most of our attacks ended up missing even on sevens and nines. In short, we were eventually able to bring him down, but it felt like we were stuck in one spot. Pumping fists, baseball bats and lead into this guy and he just wouldn't go down. Um, I'm gonna just go past a little bit. They're meant to be intimidating unstoppable killing machines who require heavy preparation of firepower. In both of your professional opinions, what tips would you give to GMs who want to run cyberpsychos in their game? And how do you make them feel truly scary? This is from Jonathan Beard. Thank you, Jonathan.
If I may, I am going to assume that Jonathan has seen Avengers, the, the first Avengers movie. Um, there is a point uh, in which, uh, you know, they're on the aircraft, spoilers for the Avengers. Uh, they're on the aircraft carrier, uh, Bruce, they, you know, they fall through, uh, Bruce and Natasha are stuck. Uh, Bruce changes, and what sells the fact that the Hulk is the scariest mofo on the planet? It's not that he's a big green monster who can crash through walls. It's that Natasha is absolutely 100. And you know she's a badass because you just saw her like earlier up be tied up and not afraid that she's about to be dumped into a pit or tortured to death by a bunch of Russian mobsters, right? She is terrified. She is absolutely 100% terrified. That sells it. So here's the thing. Cyberpsychos are not terrifying by themselves. Cyberpsychos are terrifying because of how people react to them.
Uh, that is.
That's, that's my first tip. Is uh, is uh, people, and you, you know what? If I'm the GM, I have a cyberpsycho, maybe the cyberpsycho is gonna be like combat, 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 combat. Or maybe the cyberpsycho is going to occasionally do something just absolutely whack. You know, just reach out, like, I'll describe how they just reach out, grab a bystander and pull them apart. I won't roll for it. That's all they'll do that round. And yeah, it also gives the players a round, right? Recover, to plan. Uh, but it also just clarifies how terrifyingly powerful they are.
You know, um, I, I think that, uh, I, I think that, you know, in that, in your example, um, you know, your, your party like fought them uh, using their skillset. Um, but a different party would fight them using a different skillset. So it's, it's by the nature that you all created, um, you know, martial arts, melee characters. Um, you showed up for a martial arts melee fight, you know what I mean? Um, it's kind of like, I, I'm certain that your GM was, was going, oh, my, my characters are very strong and I want to show them being very strong, so let me throw the most badass thing against them so that when they prevail over it, we can show how strong the characters are. And in the process, I'd be pull for, you know, let's go with the hardest core uh, physical threat I've got. Which is what if there was a cyberpsycho that could 1v4 the team and they could still win? Um, so, uh, I, I think this is a lot of, um, there, there's sometimes this, this thing when people optimize, right? If people combat optimize their characters and they focus their character for combat, um, they're kind of putting expectations down and saying, I want to play a game where this type of character is a main character. Um, right? So I would imagine like a cyberpsycho, so that brings up, so there's your situation, I think, explained. But if you build different characters, maybe your cyberpsycho would be different, right? Like maybe it's a cyberpsycho who's a functioning cyberpsycho and he's a member of the police force or something. And he just starts calling the cops.
Yep, James brings up a very good point.
These guys are cyberpsychos, you know what I mean? Let's call Max Tac. I, they're going crazy, you know? Um, send the whole team, call Hammerman. Um, these guys are bad news and hangs up the phone and then punches himself twice and goes, good luck, kids.
So, so James brings up a very good point. The uh, the cyberpsychos we see in Edrunners and the one you described are rampaging cyberpsychos. They're hulks. They're mad, they go crazy, they just eat the hell out of anything in their way. Uh, not, a lot of cyberpsychos are fully functional, uh, in the case of like, they can live in society. And you can have the stalking cyberpsycho who likes to come in, just do something and leave real quick and just do that over a series. That's a great reoccurring incident to just, you know, you never, your players can never rest because they never know when there's something in the shadows. You have.
If you have.
Intelligent one like James described.
Yeah, I, I mean, basically, if you have a Holmes character, you need a Moriarty, Moriarty cybersig.
Yes.
Uh, so be careful when you do these combat optimizations, because you end up creating these.
One of.
You don't want to fight a combat demon, don't become a combat angel.
One of my, one of my favorite descriptions of a cyberpsycho was a netrunner, and he obviously didn't go and start just rampaging through downtown. He would go and like erase people's credit histories. Or, you know, shut down, you know, hack their door locks so it no longer accepted their biometrics. You know, he would just mess with them. Uh, and so, yeah, uh, cyberpsychos don't have to be rampaging monsters. Uh, it's, sometimes they're a lot more fun if they're not. Uh, so if, if, so yeah, that's it. If fighting a big combat monster isn't scary for your players, pick cyberpsycho who does think it is scary for your players. Um, within limits, you know, if there's real arachnophobia, make the spider cyberpsychos. That kind of thing, which by the way, is absolutely terrifying when you give them the just weld them to a, weld them to a cyber chair.
Yeah, that is nuts.
The upload has a cyber chair and he has jumping spider eyes.
The upload is scary as heck.
That's great.
And probably.
The upload's not a cyberpsycho. He's not a cyberpsycho, he's a sociopath.
He's just a regular psycho.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The, is there, I have a question for you guys, uh, before I make my, uh, give my two cents. Is there a stat block out there for a cyberpsycho in any of the books or anything?
In Core Rad, there is a cyberpsycho, um, just here's an option.
He's a very traditional rampaging combat monster cyberpsycho.
Gotcha. So, uh, Jonathan, I would say if your game master was, your game master running that stat block, were they making a homebrew one? That also, you know, is a factor as well. Because I, I've used cyberpsychos, I've made my own stat blocks for them. And I've, throughout the experiences I've had, I've had to tune that stat block, you know, either up or down in different ways. So make sure that, um, you know, that's a good place to start from the book. So make sure that, um, you know, that's a good place to start from the book. Run it rules as written maybe, and then see how you guys like it. And then see if there's any mechanics that you can pump up or down. Cause my first cyberpsycho that I introduced to the party, the party just likes, like, you know, a light breeze at it, it was gone. And I, I realized like, oh, okay, this thing has to be like superhuman. There's also the whole action economy of like five players throwing everything at them.
For a five person, for a five person party, it's a, um,
So, uh, in, I know, without going to, without going to specifics, there is a cyberpsycho in Tales of the Red.
Hmm.
Um, and said cyberpsycho has, uh, has help. Uh, they are not, and there's, and James, uh, and John, John John have pointed out very similar.
Is this the one I'm thinking of?
It's the one at the end of the book, the final one.
Oh, okay.
The one at the end of the book?
Oh, yeah. I was, I thought it was the first one.
Sorry, there are two, there are two cyberpsychos in the book. There's one at the beginning and one at the end.
Gotcha.
One doesn't have help.
No, I'm thinking of the one at the end. Uh, the, the one at the end has help because, uh, they have, uh, things. So I will say, uh, one, it's always terrifying when your cyberpsycho can stuff facts about you as if they know you and have been researching you and stalking you. And you know what? Chances are you're on the data pool and all they have to do is a library search. And they have an agent and their agent's AI can do the library search for them while they're fighting you. E. Um, uh, just because they're a cyberpsycho does not mean they can't have help in the form of drones or automated defenses or cops if they're part of the police force or flunkeys. You know?
Or another cyberpsycho.
Or another cyber, ooh, you got a Bonnie and Clyde cyberpsycho. Um, what's it? Natural born killers?
Oh, it would be nat, it would definitely be natural born killers. Bonnie, it was natural born killers, not Bonnie and Clyde.
Yeah, you got some, you got some natural born killers going. Cyberpsychos, you've got some cool stuff, yeah. So you've got some action there. And you're right, one cyberpsycho against five combat optimized characters, that's a hard thing to be scary. So you've gotta find out what, what scares, um, and always go back to the life path.
That's always been my advice to people, life path.
Personal, yeah. Just a rampaging cyberpsychos, just a rampaging cyberpsycho. But go back to your life path. Make them your cyberpsycho.
Yeah, does someone have an uncle? Oh, no, Uncle Ruckus.
Ruckus. Okay, that's great. I love that. Uh, thanks for the answers, guys. Uh, let's do hopefully a couple more. This is from Patrick Tool. Uh, Patrick is asking the functionality of the med tech bag, computer, tech tool, and, uh, and such things. What are, what is the clear purpose for these items?
The med tech bag, the tech tool, and, uh,
The computer, um, in Bag Inflatable Bed is another one that they listed.
Bag Inflatable Bed?
I don't think that correlates with the other ones, but.
Most, most of those items are tools. And there is, um, in the Getting It Done chapter, uh, which, uh, foolish me, I didn't have my book right in front of me. Here it is.
There's a, there's a modifier section, correct? And one of the modifiers is, does not have the right tools.
Yes.
So it's,
Say, yeah. Page.
I believe we list several things that are part of a tech tool. And several things that would be found or that you might do with a, um, med tech bag. Uh, and, and they function as a way to not get that penalty mechanically. Um,
If, if you're trying to,
This is assuming your GM remembers the, the modifiers in the fat section. And admittedly, that section is for them to forget or remember as they wish.
Yes, but think about it this way, um, you're trying to, you're trying to get through a door and nobody has picklock, so you agree to do, your tech says, oh, or somebody says, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take apart the doorknob. Basic tech, I gotta take apart the doorknob. Um, and so you say, okay, with what? So, you know, it's, we don't reward you for having it, we penalize you for not having it in this, in most cases.
And, and that's if your GM is the type of person that would do that or care about that ostensibly. Um, that means that the tool hand, uh, largely is for story. Is to say, no, I have that. If you're the type of player that wants to talk about their tools and how they work, um, there, there are certain role players that really want that. Um, then this gives you the story power to say, I unscrew my screwdriver finger and I do it.
Yeah, yeah, there's a section, there's a section in the core rulebook, uh, where the negative and positive modifiers are. And some of the examples are like, is this an easy task, a difficult task? And as a game master, you just have to ask yourself like, okay, can this med tech patch up a wound without their bag? They don't have the equipment, they don't have bandages, they don't have any of that stuff. Technically, yes, if they look around and they find some stuff, they can do something. Is it good, but it'll be a difficult task, whereas if they actually had the tools, it would be much easier to do the task.
Hey, and if they find, if they fail and then find their tools after, then that counts as another opportunity to do the check since they have a higher bonus.
That's right, they have changed it.
Even MacGyver always has a Swiss Army knife.
Yeah, there you go. So, yeah, and, and per rules as written, if you change, uh, the aspect of the skill check in any way, then you can redo the skill check, whether you use luck points or you do something crafty like.
As long as it gives you a higher bonus.
Yeah.
You can't do the one where, oh, let me make things even harder on myself to get another attempt.
But I would allow for a, a positive narrative change, which is like, oh, I, I didn't have my bag before, but I just got it from the car.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I would, I would argue that also gives a positive rules change. But if the GM is like, oh, well, I didn't do that before, okay, I guess there's a positive narrative change now. I get where you're coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Okay. Thank you, Patrick. I, I appreciate that question. Uh, this is from Genghis Sean. Love that.
Ooh, that's a clever one. I like that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, on page 225 of the core rulebook, love page numbers. It says that if you can't pay your hospital bill when you leave, you can pay at the beginning of next month. If you can't pay that on time, then you quote, risk collection agents being sent after you, which isn't somebody, which isn't something somebody wants. Uh, what exactly would they do, these agents? Uh, do they break your legs? What, what do you guys have ideas on, on what these agents would do?
The worst sentence that you can possibly violate in this book is a sentence that provides the GM an excuse to send an open-ended threat at you. If you violate this sentence as a player, you're doing it because you want smoke. You want a lot of smoke. You want a whole like smoked meat factory of smoke. Um,
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
My personal opinion is, I mean, it's up to you what happens, but my personal opinion of it is, is some very unpleasant people who are very well armed come up to you and say, you know, it doesn't matter where you didn't give them their address, you didn't give your right address or anything like that, they will find you. They'll come up to you and say, you owe us a thousand EB. Give it to us or give us enough stuff we can sell it.
Yeah.
Come up to a thousand EB. And if you don't,
I would imagine, yeah.
You know that cyberarm you got full of all those options? I bet you once we repair it after we rip it off your body, that'll be worth a thousand. And there's a great, um, Cyberpunk 2077 is a great point where Max and Mike talks about how trauma team operates about taking, you know, they're like, oh, you can't pay your bills, but guess what? That liver of your, that cyber liver you've got is worth this much. So always remember, even if, even if you can't pay, you can't pay, or if you're the crafty GM and you need a hook for your next story.
Yeah, and then, I, I would say, you know, you send the sharks after and then the sharks are like, uh, hey, we're gonna do this, you know, here, we're gonna come back in a week and, uh, if you don't give us this amount of money, we're gonna rip this arm off you. Um, and then the crafty GM goes, ooh, I know what to do. I'll have a medium grade fixer call them and say, you know, hey, whoa, that's all really dangerous. Um, let's go into arbitration. The one where you do a favor for me and I do a favor for you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, um, and then they do a job for no pay. There you go.
Yeah.
Hopefully, while this is all happening, the other player characters aren't like, sure, fuck that guy, he's the one who got shot.
So, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Uh, this is a very important lesson, I think, is that don't get so bogged down in your campaign that you can never stop and say, hey, how could I make this into a news story? Or how could I make this, you know, it could be that, you know, you had this adventure planned anyway and it was just gonna be, uh, Hornet calls and says, in this case, Hornet, you know, now has a reason because Hornet says, hey, Tume, I hear you need, need some money or trauma team's gonna come and rip off your arm. Aren't you lucky? I'm willing to pay your hospital bill if you do me a favor.
Hmm.
Right, right, right. Yeah, great.
Yeah.
It's always a good idea to listen to him specifically.
Hornet's got some great favors involving horrible toxic things.
There's a, there's a fantastic, uh, interview where, um, Woodchipper is interviewing Jericho and they talk about Hornet and they're like, and Woodchipper's like, don't put me, don't, don't talk to me and Hornet at the same time.
Oh, man, that's funny. Uh, yeah, the all good advice. I think one of the best franchises to do it well is like the Bethesda ones, like the Elder Scroll and Fallout series. There is, uh, as you're playing the game, if you like murder somebody, um, an NPC, then somebody will pay, or if you steal from their house and they're not there, they'll pay some bandits or people solos in our example to come after you. And in my mind, it's like, all right, the, the person, the debtor, debt, debtor, debtor, um, they'll have to think to themselves, is it worth paying solos all the time to try to get my money? Or at this point, do we just cut it as a, you know, cut our losses? That's something they'll have to deal with as well.
Yeah.
If you've ever seen, um, ever seen Better Off Dead, the old eighties movie, you want the kid on the bicycle delivering papers after the $5 that he's owed. Because it's a great story beat.
There you go.
If you haven't seen that movie, go see it because it's a great movie.
There you go. You have a recommendation. Let's do one more. There, yeah, that's, I mean, we got everything in this podcast.
All right, one more, one more.
One more quick one and then we'll end it on this one. This is from, I'm so sorry for butchering your, your name, Sayantan Mitra. Uh, this is page 158, the lawman roll ability says, as an action, you can attempt to roll equal or lower, lower than your backup rank on a D10, equal or lower, all right? When you are seriously wounded, you suffer minus two to all actions. When you're grabbed or grabbing, you suffer minus two to all actions. So does this mean it's actually easier to call for backup? Because the minus two brings it down? So I'm sure you guys understand what, what that, what's going on.
I leave that to James, but I believe we've actually ruled on this before.
Uh, and I, and tell me if we've ruled on this in a different way. Nothing is supposed to really touch this particular role. It's a roll ability. It's very specific and, um, there is, uh, a bit of, um, there's a bit of a balance problem in allowing that and that's, uh, that you could essentially get any kind of minus to that roll. It's not just that one.
I threw, I threw away my phone and now I don't have the right tools.
Right, I threw away my phone and I don't have enough tools and, oh no. Um, here, here I would, I would say just don't, look, there is a slight difference from as an action and this is an action. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we could have worded this better.
We could have worded this better. Yeah.
No, um, this is, this is more akin to a save than it is to anything else.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the negatives you have do not help in this case. I, I could almost see a case for like, oh, officer down, get here faster. I could almost see a case for that, you know, that very specific, I'm mortally wounded.
Which is why there's a question. There's a question because there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a reading of this rule that gives a, it should, maybe, um, but, uh, I, I would say, um, if you're a lawman, um, it really pays to be, uh, for the department to like you.
Yes.
Um, and what's more important than this role, um, that even, okay, even lawmen that are well-liked in the department do this for the call. And the reason they do that is because in cop stories, backups sometimes can't show up in time. Um, in order, or else we'd never have a hero cop character. You know what I mean? They just do the call and we'd be Tom Clancy in every building. Um, you know what I mean?
Die Hard Bruce Willis was constantly failing his backup calls.
He was constantly failing his backup calls and he just happened to do it his darn self.
Great Christmas movie.
Oh, big, big Christmas movie. Um, I don't know, there's that Santa one that's coming up that I'm excited for. Put our Santa up on the screen. Do it. Show them our new Santa. Put it up on the screen, John John.
I, I think the answer here is that technically no. It, no negatives would affect this role. I, as a GM personally would allow once someone to say, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm mortally wounded, I'm calling in, I'm calling in all my chips, officer down, other hood of blue, that kind of thing. After that, you, you do that too often and the cops will go, dude, why do you keep getting yourself in situations when you're not even on duty? And they're not gonna come.
I would, I would, um, I would maybe as a GM, um, to, to piggyback on that. Uh, if you wanna learn all the departmental stuff and you're looking to buy a book this Christmas season.
Oh, that's clever.
Yeah, sell it, sell it. What's it called again? Protect and Serve? It's out on PDF.
Yes.
It, Protect and Serve has a bunch of tools in it that you can print off and then make characters fill out for like an incidents report if they're a lawman.
Yep.
And, um, if you're in that kind of campaign, which you should know if you have two or more lawmen in your party, that you're in that kind of campaign.
Yeah.
Um, it would be funny, two lawmen and the rest of them are rocker boys, you'd, it would be a fun time. Um, anyway, point being, uh, is, uh, there's, if they're role-playing as a cop really heavily and they did do something nice and they should get a benefit, um, I would imagine that there's someone in the department that can make sure your phone call gets picked up when you call this one time.
Yep.
Because, you know, you, you did win the departmental pancake breakfast kickoff.
I, I will also point out that once again, this goes back to what we said earlier. Everything's a possible story moment. So think about it this way. You're down, you're, you're mortally wounded. By the way, I've seen games where literally the party's almost at a TPK and some, the lawman finally succeeds at their backup check. And the officer and the backup swings in and it changes, it changes everything for them. Um, but you're down, you call in, your GM says, okay, you're mortally wounded, you sound like it, the dispatcher sent someone out to you right away. Um, and then the GM follows that up with, a week later, uh, Officer Petrofsky, and she says, you know what? Remember how like I saved your butt last week? Well, there's some evidence down in the locker, right? If it gets logged in, you know, if anyone really looks at it, you know, my neck's on the line, so I did you a favor. Now I need you to do me a favor.
You mean there's no honest cops in Night City?
It says when you walk into Hammerman's office.
Yeah. No, there are no honest cops in Night City. Night City, the NCPD is the biggest gang in Night City, man.
Hell, yeah. I love that. All right, folks, uh, Tumes, thank you guys so much for the questions. If you Tumes have more questions, johnjohnlawis@gmail.com. Do not be shy, send them over. We will answer as many as we can. We love page numbers. We love the esoteric ones. Um, and I think next time,
We also love questions about DLCs.
Love those, love those.
At the beginning.
Yes, and,
I'm joking about the elf thing. It will not get priority.
That's hilarious. So, yeah, thank you all so much for, for sending in your questions. We really appreciate it. We love connecting with the community. And Jay Gray, thank you so much for joining us today. It's always a pleasure having you here and it's, it's really a blessing to have you in our community.
Thank you. I enjoyed hanging out with you guys.
Uh, James, anything you wanna tell the fine folks at home before we are adjourned?
No, but I'm working on something. Couple of, uh, couple more months and I'll finally have something to tell them. Anyway, uh, up till then, have a great holiday, everybody. And, uh, get to play some TRPGs.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, use, use, use the TRPGs as an excuse to hang out with people you haven't hung out with in a while.
Yeah, hide the dice under the eggnog. Be like,
Exactly, exactly. exactly exactly
you found the magic
they'll finish their eggnog they'll finish their eggnog at the bottom there'll be a die and I'll be like well you already signed up for this campaign
there you go we do not recommend it that is might be a choking hazard but it would be funny but uh from Artel Sorian from myself happy holidays to all of you may you have a safe fun holidays and new year we'll see you guys next year for some more gaming and uh Jay anything you want to say before we sign off
RTG books books from Artel Sorian Games they make great gifts
they do they do make good gifts um they they make good grips to give to other people you can buy them with money um and you can uh buy them on Drive through RPG with money and uh from our website artelsoriangames.com
oh actually um if it there is chances I think there's twelve days remaining so this is a small chance uh if this is out before the it ends if you go over at humble bundle you can pick up the Witcher and Castle Falcon scene bundle set for very little money
and that is a swell deal
it is a swell deal and you'll be getting the Starlight Children's Foundation that's all the Witcher books and all the Castle Falcon scene books
awesome that's great you guys
I remember there was something we needed to talk about
that was it that was it so yeah if you guys tuned into the end here you got a little treat there um but yeah that's it thank
thank you for feeding the algorithm
that's it exactly alright Night City Council is adjourned thank you all for coming in happy holidays happy new year we'll see you guys on the next one Jay is waving too but you can't see him
he is
bye guys